Are we sort of ready? We actually have a quorum. Good morning. Thank you, Ron. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Tuesday, June 26, 2001. There are 15 council districts. It takes 10 for a quorum, which we have. The council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at approximately 10 o'clock until we finish. We are being viewed on cable channel, Channel 35, and also available by council phone. Call the roll, please.
Birds and check. Fiore Garcetti Hernandez, Holden Miskowski Pacheco Padilla Ridley Thomas, Fournish Wax Walters and Galanters, 10 member present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Let us begin with the first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And without objection, those are approved.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be continued and referred. Item number 27, a request from Council District 8 to continue that matter until July 10.
All right, is there any objection to continuing item 27? Item 27, it is now continued to July 10.
Item number 32, a request from the city attorney to have this matter continued to July 10.
All right, item 32 will also be continued to July 10.
Item 34, a request from the city attorney to refer this matter back to the city attorney's office.
All right, without objection, item 34 will go off the agenda and back to the city attorney.
Item number 41F, Council District 8 requests this matter received and filed.
All right, if there's no objection, item 41F is received and filed, A through E are still on the agenda, and whatever else is in there. Any more?
Who made the motion on the 34?
The city attorney, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, 34, was that the city attorney? Yes.
34 is the city attorney, yes.
The city attorney asked to have it referred back to the city attorney's office.
Item 27, a request from Council District 10 to continue that matter one day.
Item, which one?
27.
Thought we already did. Oh, one day, you just continued it to July 10.
A clarification from CD 10.
Oh, all right, so you want to continue it instead of July 10, you want to continue it till tomorrow? Okay. We don't have any cards on that, anyway.
We need a clarification from two council members, one wants to continue it to July 10.
All right, let's ask the two council members to go slug it out on the side. Mr. Ridley Thomas recommended continuing it till July 10, Mr. Holden to June 27. So let's just hold it for the moment, and you guys go figure that out.
Rigging you back to the regular agenda, items number 1 through 2 on the agenda are items noted for public hearing.
Madam Chair, I just...
I'm sorry, Mr. Hernandez?
A lot of items have been deferred, and we haven't called any of the items special yet.
No, not yet.
And is item 42 being deferred?
It's still on the agenda.
Okay, I'll wait till it...
The ones that are continued so far or otherwise disposed of are 27 as soon as we decide which date, 32, 34, and 41F was received and filed. No, we haven't got to it yet, hang on. All the others are still on the agenda.
It takes a while to get the system working again.
The system doesn't quite know how to handle that, but trust me, the others are still on the agenda. Okay, items 1 and 2, we do not have any cards on items 1 and 2. Is there anybody in the chamber who wants to be heard on those items? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed, and the matters are before us. Members of the council, item 1 or item 2? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
Those are ordinances, and will be held over one week for a second reading.
Number 8 is ordinance, second reading. Okay, 8 is an ordinance on the second reading. We have cards on 8. We have cards on, these are ones for which we've already held hearings, cards on 13...
Okay, are we ready? Are we ready? Are we sort of ready? We actually have a quorum. Good morning. Thank you, Ron. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Tuesday, June 26, 2001. There are 15 council districts. It takes 10 for a quorum, which we have. Council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at approximately 10 o'clock until we finish. We are being viewed on cable channel, Channel 35, and also available by council phone. Call the roll, please.
Burns and Check, Fuhrer, Garcetti, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Ridley, Thomas, Fornich, Walters, and Glanter, 10 member present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Let us begin with the first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And without objection, those are approved.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be continued and referred. Item number 27, a request from Council District 8 to continue that matter until July 10.
All right, is there any objection to continuing item 27? Item 27, it is now continued to July 10.
Item number 32, a request from the city attorney to have this matter continued to July 10.
All right, item 32 will also be continued to July 10.
Item 34, a request from the city attorney to refer this matter back to the city attorney's office.
All right, without objection, item 34 will go off the agenda and back to the city attorney.
Item number 41F, Council District 8 requests this matter be received and filed.
All right, if there's no objection, item 41F is received and filed. A through E are still on the agenda, and whatever else is in there. Any more?
Who made the motion on the 34?
The city attorney, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, 34, was that the city attorney? Yes.
34, city attorney, yes.
The city attorney asked to have it referred back to the city attorney's office.
Item 27, a request from Council District 10 to continue that matter one day.
Item, which one?
27.
Thought we already did, oh, one day. You just continued it to July 10.
A clarification from CD 10.
Oh, all right, so you want to continue it instead of July 10, you want to continue it till tomorrow? Okay. We don't have any cards on that, anyway.
We need a clarification from two council members, one wants to continue it to July 10.
All right, let's ask the two council members to go slug it out on the side. Mr. Ridley-Thomas recommended continuing it till July 10, Mr. Holden to June 27. So let's just hold it for the moment, and you guys go figure that out.
Brings you back to the regular agenda. Items number 1 through 2 on the agenda are items noticed for public hearing.
Madam Chair, I just...
I'm sorry, Mr. Hernandez?
A lot of items have been deferred, and we haven't called any of the items special yet.
No, not yet.
And is item 42 being deferred?
It's still on the agenda.
Okay, I'll wait till it...
The ones that are continued so far or otherwise disposed of are 27 as soon as we decide which date, 32, 34, and 41F was received and filed.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
No, we haven't got to it yet, hang on. All the others are still on the agenda.
Well, they're showing being shown as deferred.
Oh, okay.
It takes a while to get the system working again.
The system doesn't quite know how to handle that, but trust me, the others are still on the agenda. Okay, items 1 and 2, we do not have any cards on items 1 and 2. Is there anybody in the chamber who wants to be heard on those items? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed, and the matters are before us. Members of the council, item 1 or item 2? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
Those are ordinances, and will be held over one week for a second reading.
Right, because we do not have 12 people present at the moment, those will go over one more week.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Fuhrer.
If I might, in lieu of deferring item 34, that can be received and filed. That's a matter in the 5th Council District, which you've already taken care of.
Okay, would you just...
I'll move to receive and file 34.
Yes, but would you just check with the city attorney's office, because they wanted to pull it back for some reason, right?
Really? I'll roll it.
Are you talking about the Brightburn man?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, that's receiving and file, just...
Oh.
I was just saying, refer it back to our office, receive and file it either way.
Okay, well, so let's do Mr. Fuhrer's motion and receive and file item 34.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Close the file, get it out of here.
That is resolved.
Okay, without objection, item 34 is received and filed, and we are now up to the next...
Items number 3 through 31 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, we've already had hearings on those. We have cards again. These are...now, 3 through 7 are ordinances, second reading, right?
No, 3 through 7 are ordinances, first reading.
First reading, okay.
Number 8 is ordinance, second reading.
Okay, 8 is an ordinance on the second reading. We have cards on 8. We have cards on, these are ones for which we've already held hearings, cards on 13, 28, and 31 in that batch. Since we've already had hearings, unless I hear a motion to have any additional hearings, Mr. Hernandez, we're about to see if there are any specials.
Item 20, special.
All right, Mr. Hernandez calls item 20 special. Any other specials? 3 through 32.
There's a request to hear 31 and 8 as special items.
All right, but, so that's just to call them special, not to hold a hearing? All right, 31 and 8 will be, well, it's, all right, 8 and 31, out. Okay, any other specials? 3 through 32, item 20 has been called special, any other specials? All right, open the roll on 3 through 7, 9 through 19, 21 through 26, and 28 through 30. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
And the ordinances will be held over one week till 7, 3.
The ordinances will go over to...
July 3.
July 3.
Fourth with on 16 and 17.
Okay, fourth with on 16 and 17, thank you. Next.
Items number 33 through 56 on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right, hold on while I get to the right part of the box here. We have cards on 34 and 44.
34 has been acted on.
Right, okay. All right, item 34, the gentleman who asked to speak on that, the item's already been So we have...
A motion is required on item number 38.
Hang on, we haven't pulled out all the ones we have cards on yet.
Yep. Madam Chair, they call 42 special.
All right, 42 is called special.
And I'll move 38.
All right, and Mr. Fuhrer has moved 38, but you don't need a special on that, you're just moving. Just want to get the ones where we have cards here. Okay, item 44 and 49, that's it. So 44 and 49 will be called special. 37 is called special by Mr. Savornich. Any other specials? Items 33 through 56. Ms. Check.
43, I have a very simple verbal amendment that we give direction to the Board of Public Works to sign off on our action.
All right.
And then it can just go.
Yeah, let's just amend that. So 40, that's 43, right? Okay. So 43 will be as amended unless there's an objection. Any other specials? Okay, open the roll on 33, 35, 36, 38, 39, 40, 41 except for F, 43 as amended, and 44 through 56. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, those are approved. And item 33, which is an ordinance presumably, or is that a second reading?
It's a first reading ordinance.
All right, so that will go over.
Madam President?
Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
May I ask that we send forthwith 35, 52, 53, and 54?
Certainly, and also 36 while we're at it.
So audit.
Thank you. Okay.
That brings you to item number 57 on the supplemental agenda. It's an item for which public hearing has been held.
Item 57.
Madam Chair, we'd like to continue that till Friday. There's a motion pending regarding a living wage compliance.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez has asked that item 57 be continued till Friday?
June 29.
June 29, correct. Okay, without objection, that'll be the order.
Brings you to items number 58 through 61 on the supplemental agenda.
Okay, I do not have any cards on those items. Is there anybody in the chamber who wants to be heard on items 58 through 61? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Any specials? 58 through 61.
Their staff.
No specials, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved, and 58 also goes over one week, right?
Correct. Ordinance over one week.
Okay, that brings us back to 8 and 31. Ms. Miskowski had called special in order to leave the room. 38 was moved by Mr. Fuhrer. I believe that will not change the outcome. You can record him if you know. Doesn't change the outcome. Okay, items 8 and 31, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on those, please. Okay, that should bring us to items...
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I think that should be 10 ayes, because Ms. Miskowski...
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, that's correct. That was the whole point of their being called special. Okay, item 20, called special by Mr. Hernandez.
Item 20? Yeah, Madam Chair, the reason, and I didn't know if the CLA's office could answer the question. This was an original vacation proceeding that began in 1991 for a project called The Metropolis, and I don't know how many of my colleagues were here at that time, but The Metropolis was literally this huge hotel that was going to go basically in the area of the Staples Center Entertainment District. Now, the fees have been paid to proceed with the proceeding, and one, I wanted to establish for the record if The Metropolis project is still continuing, or has that been abandoned? Are we doing this vacation for purposes of Staples Center? I'm trying to find out. And I think the applicant's here, so he might be able to let me know.
Yes, my name is John Valance. I'm with City Center Development. We have been involved in this project with the city since 1987, and yes, we still are maintaining the entitlements on the project, and we still intend to build the project. As the councilman may recall, this project was heavily office, and the office component for downtown Los Angeles has been somewhat depressed because the market for downtown office space has been depressed over the last several years. But we still intend to maintain our commitment with the city, and part of the project is a planned hotel, which was originally approved in the entitlements in 1993.
Right.
And we're still hoping to build those portions of the project to help support a 24-hour downtown for the city of Los Angeles.
Okay, and that's why I wanted to call it special members, because at the time, it was a pretty, it's a large project.
Yes, sir.
They're trying to build. And I remember my inquiries at the time where its impact on people union, and we were talking about those things, and now we have also an adjoining process that's moving along, and I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that, my understanding, this is just a vacation of the streets?
Yes, the vacation was approved by council in the early 90s, and this is just a modification of the conditions so we can go ahead and finish the vacations.
And that took about eight years, nine years?
Yes, sir. It's a long process.
All right, so at least, I'm hoping that my colleagues are aware of what we're doing in regards to this vacation, that that project is still alive.
That's true.
And it's something that has to be looked at when we're looking at everything else that's going on in that particular area.
And are you recommending approval or disapproval?
I don't have one feeling one way or another, except that I was concerned when I saw it again, and I just wanted to make sure we were aware of it, because it goes hand-in-hand with what the proposed Staples Entertainment District area is, and I'm not opposing it at this time.
Okay, thank you. And sir, just for our records, would you fill out one of these speaker cards, even though you were just answering his questions?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Mr. Holden.
Is any urgency associated with this issue? It's got to be done today?
Councilman...
Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Why?
The vacation proceedings have been in process for, since the early 90s.
Early 90s?
Yes.
You know what? In seven more days won't make a difference. But in seven days, you'll have a person being represented here in the 9th District.
Yes, that's correct.
And, you know, just like a courtesy thing?
Well, is she aware of the... Yes, she is.
Well, she's not here to tell us that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I think it's just proper is to wait until seven days, she gives her blessings, you got my vote.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying?
All right, so let me ask you, that being the case, if it were held over for one week, Ms. Perry would be on the council?
Yes, the councilwoman-elect is aware of this process, and, but I have no problems if that would be...
That's good.
All right, in that case, we'll just hold it over a week.
For one week, thank you.
That'd be fine.
Thank you. And please, I still need the card, though, for the records.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, Conrad, we're holding this over for one week.
One week will be July 3.
July 3. Now, are we having a regular agenda that day?
You'll have a very long agenda on July 3, yes.
Oh, swell, I can't wait. Okay, well, that's going to be part of it. All right, the next item I have on here is...
Is item number 37.
37, called special by Mr. Savornich. Mr. Savornich says go ahead. Open the roll on item 37. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, one no.
That is approved. All right, 38, we did, yes. All right, Mr. Savornich has asked that item 38 be reconsidered. Is there any objection to reconsidering item 38? All right, item 38 is now reconsidered and is up for a vote. Open the roll on item...hold on. Okay? Okay, open the roll on item 38. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
9 ayes, 2 no's.
Okay, that's approved. Okay, well, you're here now. All right, in that case, I believe it's 10 to 2. All right, I think we're up to item 42, called special by Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez, item 42.
And maybe Jerry can't help me with this one. And my intention, and I spoke with Councilmember Fuhrer, were not to delay this, but hopefully to get some answers. When we talk about the parking revenue fund, we all know that each district raises so much money that goes into that fund, and certain districts still have outstanding balances with other districts that, from previous years, the previous commitments, that haven't been paid back, and particularly to CD 1, CD 9. One of those districts happened to be CD 5. Now, I also understand the need for parking in CD 5 and the need for parking in CD 1. Now, what happened, what this motion is doing is it's declaring one project ready to go and asking that we set aside $5.7 million from the parking revenue fund with no report. There is no report from the Transportation Committee, there's no report from BOT, it's a Rule 16 motion. And I know that when Mr. Fuhrer chairs Budget and Finance, he doesn't like to see Rule 16 motions transferring money from one account to another. So I need you to share with me, do you know that this project is ready to go for a fact?
Yes.
And that it merits moving in front of the other projects we set aside funds for?
This project has previously been approved. The land for the project was already acquired through MICRA. So we're in a situation now where the contract is ready to be awarded, and they just need the funding provided to do that. So the project itself has actually been in the pipeline for a number of years. It is, the contract is ready to be awarded.
That's important information. The next part is, now allocating the 5.7 will not impact the other three projects that we previously said are priority projects?
No, it will not.
Okay. With that information, I'm willing to basically commend Mr. Fuhrer for introducing the motion, and I just wish there was more information so that we wouldn't have to call it special.
Okay, anybody else? Open the roll on item 42. Oops, sorry, Mr. Holden.
Hi, Mr. Fuhrer. This, I'm just looking at your motion now. This just deals with your district, is that correct? And you refinancing, you bonding money for parking revenue funds for the purpose of doing an addition to parking structure, or the ones you already have that's done?
Yeah, no, this is a parking structure, as Jerry said, I think it's been in the pipeline for six years. The council's approved the structure before, this is just the allocation of funds.
That's in the Alvin and Ture Boulevard in Valley?
Yeah.
Why would we have to go through this again? We approved it before, didn't we?
We approved resolution that said, without committing us to expending the funds, that several parking structures, this one, El Pueblo, Chinatown, maybe some other ones...
Oh, you added some more, weren't there?
It's just the actual...
I know, but they're not producing the money. Where does the money come from, from the general...
Special Parking Revenue Fund.
From each district, or just...
All that's occurring with this motion is fronting money from the Special Parking Revenue Fund, which would be paid back when bonds are issued.
Oh, no. No, because in Mr. Fuhrer's case, we approved it for the purpose of building the parking structure in his district, number one, and number two, the monies that pay down the bond would come from Parking Revenue Fund in his district. Now you're taking a whole blanket amount from all the districts, I believe, and saying we're going to pay down the bond using Parking Revenue Funds from all, from citywide for these parking structures. No way.
If bonds are issued, if bonds are issued for this parking structure, there are sufficient monies coming from the CD 5 Parking Meter Fund.
CD 5, what about the other districts? CD 1, isn't there one in...
Again, there is sufficient money coming from CD 5 to pay the debt service on this parking lot.
On CD 5?
Yes.
And this is the only one we're talking about today?
The only one we're talking about today, yes.
What about the St. Viviani's? What if it's ready? Where would the money come from?
From the City 9 Parking Revenue Fund.
We will be coming back to you with an entire report on the Special Parking Revenue Fund and recommending whether to cash fund or bond fund a number of projects, including...
Well, I'm not going to vote for this today. It's not that I'm going to hold this up, Mr. Fuhrer, I just need clarification. And even during your absence, I will lead the fight on the floor to guarantee that you get your money.
We're going to work this out today.
Well, I'm going to vote against it today, and I'm going to ask that we give a report on the parking revenue funds which is available in each council district, and what happened to the money if it's not available. And when you're gone, we'll ask for reconsideration on this, Mr. Fuhrer, since you're not willing to cooperate with us, and we'll make sure nothing happens with this Parking Revenue Fund in the future, because we can't be taken for it.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Burnson?
Yeah, members of the council, this is not as complicated as Mr. Holden appears to be making it. This is a very desperately needed facility over in Studio City. The money will be repaid out of funds from Council District 5, also from revenue from the structure that we'll generate. It's needed now, Mr. Holden. We sell bonds. These are revenue bonds, not GO bonds, so, you know, there's not a question of, it's just a question of being able to build something now that is needed now and with no impact on any other district. The money will be repaid very quickly, and there shouldn't be any problem, so I would urge we go ahead with this. We've reviewed this a number of times, and it's a very much needed project.
All right, item 42 is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
Okay, that's approved. I'm sorry, did you want to speak on that one? It didn't come up.
A new thing.
Okay. Fourth with on that one. Now, Mr. Garcetti.
Madam President, I'd like to move to reconsider item 8. I plan to abstain on that, and it went through quite quickly, so I was wondering if we could reconsider it, to vote on it.
All right, well, is there any objection to reconsideration of item 8, right? I know you do. Okay, item 8 is now reconsidered.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Miskowski and Mr. Garcetti are leaving the room. Does that still leave us a quorum? Okay, take Miskowski off and Garcetti off there, okay. Open the roll on item 8. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Somebody go tell them they can come back now. Next. Next. Item 44, if there was a card, I have a tab here, but I don't have the card. Was there somebody who wanted to be heard on item 44?
Yes, I did. Right around.
Well, it's up now, if you want to be heard. I did have a card for you, I saw it. Yeah, we'll do it right after this.
I'm Mort Allen from Studio City. I just wanted to ask if this item be held or sent to Plum. It has to do with the 150 public toilets that they want to put around the city, and other issues that hasn't gone to Public Works, because there hasn't been a committee meeting. And those of us in the valley are very much against having public toilets on Ventura Boulevard. And this is to give a contract to somebody to negotiate the bids, whereas last Friday, Public Works approved a bid and sent it forward. So we don't see why $247,000 should be spent to somebody to look over something that's already been approved. And we think it should go to Plum, as well as all of the matters dealing with this streetscape.
Okay, Ms. Zakowski.
Thank you, Madam President.
Hold on one second, let me close the public hearing, that closes the public hearing. Sorry, Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, Mr. Allen's request that this come to Plum is going to occur, this is actually in Plum this afternoon. And the board approved, and what the council will debate, is the selection of one contractor, and then we will need somebody to work through the contract to eliminate some of the things that we don't want, to look at how, working with each individual council district, the various elements of street furniture will be put in, with or without advertising in certain areas. And all of this will be done with each council district, with each council district consulting with its community, to determine where and what any element of the street furniture will be appropriate. But this, I think, is appropriate. Mr. Kennedy is well-known for having a sense, in fact, of being, our streetscape and our street trees, he was very, very important, and a critical part of helping develop that. So I think he's a good person to work with our comprehensive street furniture contract, and would recommend approval.
Anybody else? Open the roll on item 44, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Next item, I can't find his card, item... We had a card on, we have cards on 48. Did we? Yeah, must have gotten stuck here. I think we have to reconsider item... No, on 48, we had held, no, we had not held a hearing. So if there's no objection, we're going to reconsider item 48, for the purpose of hearing from the public. Item 48 is now before us, I have Quincy, and there's Mort Allen's card, that was in the wrong place, that's on 44. This is item 48.
I couldn't quite tell if it was 48 or 49, that was on the board there, but they're kind of related, because they're about energy. Oh, 49 is also up?
No, we're going to do 49 next, but go ahead and do 48.
Okay, you know, of course, the energy crisis, so-called, is the main thing here. And it's just, I just want to point people to Navarro's, Peter Navarro's op-ed a little while ago, in the LA Times, about the subject of economic rent. In other words, because the price for gas, natural gas, has been jacked up to three times what it was two years ago. And since most of the, most of the power plants for the last two or three decades coming online use natural gas, and there's another factor, which I just found out about, which is that not only is the MTBE oxygenate required, or ethanol, especially in the summertime in gasoline, but it is 11% by volume of the gasoline, and the MTBE happens to be made not directly from oil, but from natural gas. So figure out the math, I don't have any idea what the comparison is between the amount of natural gas that goes to moving cars compared to the amount of natural gas that goes for generating electricity, but I assume it's probably about the same. Thank you.
Thank you, that closes the public hearing on item 48. Members of the council, open the roll, close the roll, tab... Did you want to talk on 48? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Item 49, we also have cards, Jeanette Vosberg and Quincy. Jeanette Vosberg's up first. Are you here?
I have said before that I question the methodology of the research and the nature of mitigation at Playa Vista, and I certainly don't think it's a good idea to use those same unproven mitigation methods that are being used for methane at Playa Vista for the rest of the city. And I really question the wisdom of that. That's, I think that we continue to have a dereliction of duty by the city council in terms of approving the bonds that were just approved. And I think that someday, if we have our way, it will really come back to haunt you.
Thank you, Quincy.
This is something I've been following a long time at the Belmont Learning Center. And the whole thing, really, is based on a campaign of two buzzwords, namely exploding methane gas and toxic hydrogen sulfide, which actually have almost nothing to do relative to many, many other sites and schools in the district and in the LA basin with the Belmont Learning Center. In other words, a school was prevented from opening, and 2,000 kids are kept being bused to the valley every day using diesel fuel, or whatever they're using. But this is a good item, because actually, I think you'll find that the code, the building code, is some of the most stringent in the nation, in LA County and LA City, for methane mitigation. The other thing is, it was reported just once that I know of, in the LA Times, that Inglewood School District was building a big complex, sort of like Belmont, but they were going to use the oil on the site, either to sell it or use it directly for the power, that would be even better, for the school. In other words, it's a resource. If you don't tap the resource, then it will ooze out of the ground, because the tectonic system is under pressure, and, you know, oil comes out of the ground, that's how it was discovered. It's not, it's not even toxic unless you drink it. And natural gas is also not toxic, unless it explodes, or displaces your oxygen, which is very unlikely, given the code and even just the ventilation standards. Now, as for hydrogen sulfide, I found out during the Belmont Commission hearings that hydrogen sulfide is not acutely toxic until it is about 1,000 times the level at which you smell a rotten egg. In other words, it is just like the stink they put, the garlic smell they put in methane gas, so that you won't suffocate. Only, it's a horrible, disgusting smell, that literally makes you want to, want to die.
Mr. Quincy, it turns out, two more people have asked to be heard, so if you finish up.
Okay, yeah, I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you. George Bizzetti, followed by Gregory Sofier.
Thank you, councilmembers. George Bizzetti. I spent a lot of time on Belmont. The current cost of mitigation for methane at Belmont is estimated over $100 million. And Playa Vista is worse than Belmont. Plus, you have the hydrogen sulfide, I don't know where this guy gets his information from, but you talk to any sinus that works with hydrogen sulfide, and if you can smell it, you're in trouble. Liquid boot, which is being used out there, they showed that at the Belmont Commission, Mr. Hernandez, and they took a pencil and poked through it easy, and you poke through one piece of paper. That's how tough that stuff is. Now, let's put some concrete and weight on it, get the ground shaking, an earthquake, how long do you think that will last? About half a second? Could be leaking like a sieve. Everybody knows that the more that you cover, when something tries to leak out, it's going to pressurize in the places that aren't covered. You're going to have that problem out of Playa Vista. We're not against development, I'm certainly not.
This item is actually not about Playa Vista, it's about trying to take the extensive work that was done on the Playa Vista situation, and asking that the city do equally extensive work on other situations where methane rises.
You haven't done extensive work out at Playa Vista, this whole thing's been a joke.
Well, the item on the agenda that you've asked to speak about has to do with item 49. And if you would like to, if you'd like me to read you item 49 from the agenda, I'll be happy to do that. It is not about Playa Vista.
Are you talking about methane?
I'm talking about item 49 on the agenda, which says...
What are the two main places that have a problem in this city with methane right now in hydrogen sulfide? Playa Vista and Belmont, please. So if that doesn't relate, I don't know how, what does?
Let me read you the item on the agenda. I gather that the next person also wishes to speak about Playa Vista. Recommendations for council action. Instruct the Departments of Building and Safety, Engineering and Planning, as well as the Chief Legislative Analyst and Office of Administrative and Research Services, to report back to council within 45 days with recommendations to implement uniform safety requirements regarding methane for all future development throughout the city. Paragraph 2, instruct the above-mentioned departments in developing these recommendations to use the scope and methodology of research and nature of mitigation described in the final CLA report on the Playa Vista site.
Might I please ask what I did not speak to?
Paragraph of your motion, Madam President.
It's on the agenda, Mr. Holden, right in front of you.
What did it say?
You want me to read it again?
She says you're reading, the second paragraph.
Well, I was reading, because I was trying to...
I know, but...
Why don't we just let the gentleman go on about Playa Vista?
That's what you should have done.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, we'll let him go on, we'll open the hearing, we'll call everybody back. Mr. Savornich, would you take the chair? I think they'll be happier if I'm not chairing right now.
Well, I think a whole lot of people ought to just get up and leave, as far as I'm concerned. Isn't this considered the worst-run city in the country?
Well, why don't you finish your testimony and let the next gentleman get his chance?
I was trying to do that.
Please do.
I was responding to the point. If I wasn't responding to the point, and you're considering methane mitigation, I don't know what I was responding to.
All right, have you finished responding to it? You said it was a bad idea.
I guess I'm talking to a dead wall.
I heard you, you said it was a bad idea. Mr. Sofier. Yay, Mr. Sofier, let's go.
Hi, my name is Greg Sotier.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Conrad?
I teach with LA Unified at Virgil Middle School, and I've tried to talk on Playa Vista for the last three meetings, every time I've been shut out. At the first Plum meeting, Mr. Berenson actually said that I would definitely be allowed to speak at the next hearing. Of course, I wasn't. I sent out a fax to every councilperson, and I hope that you received it. Did you? Yes? Okay, good. Basically, I have two main points to make very quickly. One is, on this methane issue, I don't know how you, as a city council, can accept acceptable risk and allow people to be put into danger to build projects. Some people probably will get hurt. Some people may even develop cancers and other types of diseases, asthma-related diseases, from these gases at Playa Vista and other methane-related issues around the city and city developments. Maybe what you should do is put big warning signs in every project that you build, every, especially when you're using Melrose funding, saying, you know, "This property is dangerous to your health, so if you're going to live here," you know, at least that way the city might avoid some liability. Secondly, I invite every one of the city councilpeople to come into my classroom, Virgil Middle School, my term starts next week, and explain to my 7th grade students why you're allowing this project, Playa Vista, to be built, even though you know that there are very real dangers that cannot be mitigated properly with the current technology. These developers may tell you that, but hey, you know, there's always, the Brooklyn Bridge is always for sale, and if the city council's into buying bridges, well, you should be into building bridges, not buying bridges. This whole process has been very, very instructive to me, as a teacher within LA Unified. I have to deal with basically 120, 150 7th graders each year, coming mostly from the Pico Union District, which is a very, very overcrowded area. A lot of these kids, you know, they're living in very, very impoverished situations, so I try to build values in them, I try to get them to understand how the mechanisms of our local and county and state and federal government work. But using you as an example, in terms of how you decide this issue, would do nothing except to alienate them from the whole political process. And that's all that I have to say.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing on item 49.
There are more cards!
There are cards on 8 and 31, I didn't have any more cards. Well, I can't find it, I'm sorry. That closes the public hearing on item 49. Does anybody wish to say anything?
I don't have cards.
Mr. Hernandez?
Madam Chair, members of the council, the only reason I felt the need to press my button was because the previous speaker, who was a teacher at Virgil Junior High School, I think more than anybody else, knows the fact that in the inner city, there are no junior high schools. Elementary school kids are bused out to the valley, and for some reason, the school district has found that to be a better plan than giving children a home school. One reason they found that out is because they basically can't build schools in the inner city. They tried to do that with the Belmont Learning Center. And the reality is, as people laugh, and they go to the Central Museum, Central Library, they go to the Page Museum, they go to the La Brea Tar Pits, they come here today. This is an urban environment, and methane gas is a reality of that environment. And we have to mitigate it. I happen to know that when you don't mitigate, and you don't release, and you don't pump that oil out, what happens is you're creating the potential of methane gas accumulation underneath the ground. Now, I got this because of a study that we conducted with the Department of Toxicists of the State of California in 1992. And we brought in everybody, and what happened is, we had a clear understanding that we had to pump that oil in order not to have the methane gas buildup. But it happened to be in the areas where people live, it happened to be in the areas where children are growing up, and it happened to be in the areas where there's no schools. There's no schools. Now, when the school board took a position to try and build a school at Belmont, they made that the issue. They tried to set a standard that said, "Where children live, we cannot have schools because of the environment." These are the same people, by the way, who choose to live in Los Angeles. I say that because we all have to make difficult decisions. We can live in Idaho, where there's open land, and cities with populations of 30,000 or less. But when you live in Los Angeles, our reality is, we're a city of 3.5 million people in a region with 10 million. And the fact is, we have neighborhoods that are mixed with commercial and industrial and the inner city. But the real crime is when we choose not to provide the kinds of facilities children should have, because we don't want to mitigate. We don't want to mitigate. We want to basically allow those children not to have schools. It's all right to bus them, and give them a secondary education. This is a tough decision, because we're trying to balance the quality of life in regards to the environment. I wish that we had nothing but open fields. But I live here, and they're not open fields. In fact, for me to go to Playa Vista, most likely I have to travel by an automobile in a crowded freeway, with all the smog. And that's what makes no sense about living in the city. At the same time, those of us who choose to have to deal with it, and have to figure out how to make it safer. But that's what mitigation is about. I know that this Melrose bond issuance is part of the infrastructure development for that area. I know that this is part of the mitigation process we're trying to go through. Sorry to say, not everybody will believe us. Maybe one day, they'll be in this position. If their movement's strong enough, and they can get elected to make those decisions, I hope they also keep in mind the children.
Item 49 is before us, anybody else? Open the roll, close the roll. Open the roll, close the, oh, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
I'm sorry. What's, what's this one, now, for the record?
We submitted another card.
All right, but I had already closed the hearing. If the council would like to reopen the hearing, somebody will make a motion and we'll reopen the hearing. Well, so far.
You closed it after that.
Yeah, fine, I'll make that motion.
All right, for one more. Ms. McPherson, you're on.
I'm second.
I say thank you for my camera being here, and thank you for opening that. Dan?
Yeah.
Or go ahead. I would like to ask for accountability. I'm president of Grassroots Coalition. I brought the gas issue to this city council, which ignored it for years until I took it to LA Building and Safety, who acted upon it immediately when Playa Capital was still telling the world that all they had to deal with out there was swamp gas. We proved them wrong, and you are wrong now. As far as this methane mitigation is concerned, we would like to see accountability. I would like to know who is responsible for the tiered approach in the methane mitigation? This is not a rhetorical question. I would like to know who is responsible. According to the Seismic Safety Hazard Mapping Act, this area is in a hazard zone. That's because it's a liquefaction zone. According to the seismic hazard mapping guidelines, you have to adhere to those guidelines, which means you have to have someone that is licensed and is also familiar with those seismic hazards. Now, for that to happen, someone has to be accountable for this tiered approach, and I would like to know who is accountable, because you must have a license, and we are going to challenge this report. We are already being forced to challenge the CLA report before the Department of Conservation because it did not adhere to the guidelines in the Seismic Hazard Mapping Act. That's not a rhetorical question. Ms. Glaner, this is your district. Do you know who is responsible for this tiered approach?
I'm waiting for you to finish your testimony, and I'm trying not to interrupt you.
All right, in that case...
Finish what you have to say.
May I ask, will you answer that, number one? The other thing is, I'm not talking to you, Mr. Berenson, right now. I'm speaking with Ms. Glaner.
No, Ms. McPherson, you're speaking to all of us. This is a hearing of the Los Angeles City Council.
In that case, please answer our questions. We have had absolutely no accountability. Before the Building and Safety Commission, we had issues and questions that were not answered. According to the documents that we received, we were supposed to be able to examine department witnesses, and we were not allowed to examine anyone. We have had no accountability with this city for any of the material that we have brought forward to you.
All right, thank you.
Will you be responsible? Will you be accountable?
That closes the public hearing, and I would like to now bring to the, oh, Mr. Holden, let me just, if I may just say, that the issue the council is about to vote on is whether to instruct the departments that I read off before to report back to the council within 45 days with recommendations to implement uniform safety requirements regarding methane for all future development in the city. Mr. Holden wishes to be heard.
I support the motion, Madam President, but also, we'd just like to have the lady who just spoke to itemize those questions and, and submit them to me again, if you have already, I don't know, and to make sure, and I'll make sure you get an answer to them.
Good idea. Mr. Berenson.
Yeah, number one, I believe those were all submitted to the CLA for comment and for, because I asked, specifically asked for that at our committee meeting when we dealt with, with this issue. So at any rate, it's just a question of what people are willing to believe or accept, and it's unfortunate that they will use something like this to try to rehash something like the Playa Vista thing, because this goes a lot, this has a scope that goes a lot greater. First of all, I would hope that this, you know something, you're very rude. You really are rude. This goes a lot, this goes a lot...
Mr. Berenson, just finish what you have to say.
Well, I can say what I want to them, too.
I, I know, but it'll probably matter if you didn't.
And I will. I may go out there and say it to them. Okay? The point is, members of the council, I would hope this would also include dealing with things like Sunshine Canyon, when we reopen the city portion that this council approved, that they be required to also meet those same considerations that may be derived from any questions as far as health are concerned.
Okay, Item 39, or 49 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item 49 is approved. The next item, I believe...
Council President, do you wish to consider the ordinances now there are 12 members present?
Yes.
Items 1, 2, 3 through 7, 33, and 58.
Okay. Is there any objection to reconsidering the ordinances now that we have 12 people present?
Your, your board shows 11...
I think we just lost someone.
All right, well, we lost one. Then we won't reconsider them.
Never mind.
That brings us, I think, to Item 62.
Item 62 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hear public comment at this time?
Let's take public comment before then. This is the time to hear from members of the public on items not on today's agenda. I have three people who've asked to speak. Joel Larkin, Chris Amantia, and Quincy. Mr. Larkin.
Good morning, Madam Chair and council members. My name is Joel Larkin, and I'm representing ExxonMobil Oil Company. I am the West Coast Pipeline Operations Manager. I have operational responsibility for the Southwest Terminal and all of our West Coast pipeline assets. My purpose in appearing before the council here today is to request that the city council assume jurisdiction over an order that was recently issued by the Port Board of Commissioners that requires ExxonMobil remove its pipelines in the inner harbor area of LA. ExxonMobil has had a long working relationship with Pola. We've had facilities on the terminal island dating back as far as the 1920s. We recognize the port's need to expand its operations, but ExxonMobil's Pola facilities are a vital asset and serve as a strategic supply link for blending components to make gasoline. In addition, due to declining domestic crude production, imports through our Pola facilities will become increasingly more important to Southern California's energy needs. The August 2002 completion deadline in the proposed order is unrealistic and does not provide enough time to remove and replace these vital pipeline assets. Therefore, we respectfully request the council to rescind the order approved by the Commissioners on June 13th. This action by the city council was requested to allow both parties additional time for constructive discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Amantia. Sorry if I didn't get that right.
You were very close. Thank you, Madam President. Chris Amantia, I'm with McDermott, Will and Emery. We're representing ExxonMobil Oil Corporation. As you just heard from Mr. Larkin, on June 13th, the city's Board of Harbor Commissioners adopted an order directing ExxonMobil to remove and relocate three of its pipelines beneath the inner harbor channels of the Port of Los Angeles to make way for the port's channel deepening project, which of, of course, is a project that we support. We've asked the city council to take jurisdiction over this order pursuant to Section 245 of the Los Angeles City Charter and to place the issue before the council on an agenda for veto consideration. In addition to the practical implications of the order that Mr. Larkin just articulated, dealing with the, the deadline and the fact that it's virtually impossible for ExxonMobil to do the work that needs to be done to meet that deadline, the order also violates the Federal Water Resources Development Act, which is the act pursuant to which the port is seeking a significant amount of funding for this project. That particular act requires a 50-50 cost sharing between the port and the, the pipeline utility owner, and the federal law preempts state law as well as the provisions of ExxonMobil's license with the port. The port claims that ExxonMobil has not provided any legal authority for its position, but in fact, as we've provided to each one of the council members, we have provided a, a booklet with approximately 25 authorities that support the position that we have, that we've asked the Board of Harbor Commissioners to take with respect to this order. The port staff now claims that these pipelines are not utilities and therefore not covered under the Water Resources Development Act. This claim was not made until April of 2001, and again, we've provided the Board of Harbor Commissioners with abundant authority that, that the federal law views these types of pipelines as utilities, subject to the provisions of the act. So the, the port essentially has taken a very narrow interpretation of the federal act. It's not consistent with their own federal, their own feasibility study, and they prepared a supplemental environmental impact statement and report, which characterized these pipelines that I'm talking to you about today as utilities, subject to the 50-50 cost sharing provisions. Their position now is that this was only a preliminary determination. So as Mr. Larkin said, we would respectfully request that the city council take jurisdiction over this June 13th order so that, and that the city council ultimately, within the time period set forth in the charter, veto the, the orders so that we can have time to go back and negotiate these issues with the Port of Los Angeles and the Board of Harbor Commissioners without being under the, the hammer of an order. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And Quincy.
Madam, I'd like to speak on two different subjects, and the first is, I really wanted to speak to this on Friday's meeting, but the quorum left and I couldn't, because it would have been more timely. But the mayor, right now, I think, is flying back from Detroit, where he had, was sitting at the feet, along with my green mayor from Santa Monica, was sitting at the feet of, yes, George Bush, our faith-based initiator-in-chief on mayor leadership and faith-based initiatives. I assume that they are going to bring home the money. The hypothesis, or the question, is what they're bringing home the money for? To take, you know, maybe some kind of city-funded festival off the shoulders of the city, onto federal, a kind of a gay law, ecumenical, green coalition of churches? That's my hypothesis. As to Baldwin Hills Park, and there was, the thing about the Times coverage was that it was, it was a little bit obsequious because they did not point out, until like later, and in the middle of the article, towards the end of the article, that the power plant that the stocker company wanted to put on the land was about the size of a trailer. I guess it's one of those micro turbines or something like that, to supply 53 megawatts of power as well as power the oil wells that are still there. So you gotta wonder why people would prefer to have pipelines and stuff going from all, you know, from Texas, or even from the east, from the Timor Sea, which is another, the El Paso company, which has been ripping us off for natural gas for some time, said that they have to maintain, that the prices for natural gas have to be maintained above 1990s levels, presumably the three times prices they were from two years ago, in order to make it feasible for them to import liquid natural gas from the Timor Sea, from an Australian company, which of course, made out big when the, the so-called nation of East Timor separated from Indonesia. But, let's see, do I have anything more to say? If we don't have a little bit more rational discussion about the energy policy, and if we don't actually use the law that, that created the Federal Electricity Regulatory Commission, which was FDR Depression-era law, in which the notion of market power is defined probably for the first time, if we don't use it soon, and if we don't stop as, you know, different parties, such as Democrats, if we don't stop the appointments from the so-called Federal Society and the Montpelin Society affiliates, like the Heritage Foundation et al., right-wing so-called conservative think tanks so-called, then they are going to change the law very soon, and then they will be able to go, let the market be damned. See, the administration does not need the Kyoto Protocol because they've got market power. Already, last May, the electricity use went down 13% from the previous year, so that's a very effective policy, when you don't include other choices such as nuclear power. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period, and I believe we are now ready to adjourn to executive session to discuss Item 62. So we'll do housekeeping as we clear the room. Those of you who are not involved in the items, in Item 62, this is a good time to exit because we have to go into closed session.
motions for posting and referral?
Yes, do that. Without objection, the motions are posted and referred.
Councilmember's request to be excused on council attendance. Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on July 13th for city business. This meets policy.
If it meets policy, we'll give it a unanimous vote. Mr. Garcetti will move.
The desk is clear except for Item 62.
Okay. As soon as the room is clear, we will do Item 62. Ms. Jick?
Yes, with great sadness, colleagues, Madam President, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Gary Weiss, who was a very energetic and active and giving back to the community member of the 3rd Council District. He lived in Winnetka. He died of cancer, passed away last week. He was married to his wife Joyce for 22 years. He leaves two daughters and a son. He was co-chair of the Community Police Advisory Board about a year ago. He was a charter member of the Chatsworth Optimists, involved in Blind Youth Olympics. He was president of the Winnetka Chamber, and he was a neighborhood watch member. He will be missed.
I'd like to be a co-presenter on that.
Right. Anybody else?
Do we adjourn for Stanley Moss? Judge Moss?
Yes, yes.
You did?
Call the roll. We are adjourned. See you tomorrow at 10 o'clock.